Congratulations. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Yes.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Dave Chandler. I'm the Principal Business Analyst at the Center for Neighborhood Technology. And I'm the consultant who's working with the South Suburban Meters and Managers Association, putting together the applications for enterprise zones in the South Suburban communities. So I know that that's a subject on your agenda tonight. I just wanted to let you know that I'm here if you want a resource for information regarding that application.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Ron Reisner, again. We had new rails put up, but again, I don't think it's correct, Joe. The ties are still there. I just don't understand how they're doing all these things for this particular area. Where we could put guardrails up in a good place like the parks. But the ties are still there. They're not moved.
I asked them if they would move them. They're on village property.
Correct. You said you'd move them.
No, I said I'd ask him to move them. But they are off the shoulder of the road enough.
Three feet.
I mean, Ron, I asked him nicely. He hasn't moved them. I could talk to him again. But there's a lot of people that landscape the park with. As long as it's not interfering with the parking, we usually don't.
That would be street. Where are we going to park, Joe? We got a ditch. You understand what I'm saying, Mayor?
Yeah.
We have a ditch.
Yeah. Well, you guys.
For 26 years, we never had a guardrail there.
Well, the guardrails are at a corner, and that's blocking people from.
I don't know why that was put up in the first place.
Well, the fire hydrant.
We had poles there.
He has tracks through his yard. It's a satellite view of his yard. And he has tracks through his front yard. And he showed me where there was pieces of somebody's car wrecker in his front yard. So, you know, the guardrail does a good job for him. That's separate from the ties. I don't know about the ties, but, I mean, the guardrails recommended by the Safety Committee and I think that was necessary. I don't know about the ties blocking here. You're talking about the ties blocking the park? Is that right?
I'm talking about.
You're talking about the ties thing out there that can't park on the side? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about the guardrail that was put up. There was poles there in the first place.
The poles didn't do the job.
They didn't do. Nobody ever hit them.
They went through his yard. They missed the poles. I can tell you. I've been there three times. I can tell you for a fact that's the case.
Okay. So we're not going to.
The reason they're staggered the way they are is the underground utilities. There's gas lines and water mains there.
Okay.
You know, they might like to have done it on a perfect corner.
But it should have been on an angle. If a car comes, he's going to hit it head-on.
This is the best I could do. This is the best I could do with other utilities in there. That's the best I could do. You know, we moved them and tried everything we could without putting drug gas in them.
What about the ties?
I'll have to look at that again, but like I said.
They haven't moved.
I know they haven't. I know they haven't.
So we're not doing it?
Okay. I'll talk to them again.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? At this time, I will close the door. You can open the cabinet. And I would be looking for a motion on the consent agenda. This evening, we have the approval of the Board minutes from November 12th, the committee meeting minutes of November 26th, the bill list, the police, public works, and building department. I do not have the fire departments report yet. We are still waiting for the ambulance reports to come in. It doesn't come in normally until around 15th of the month. So we'll approve that later in the month.
I'd like to request to have number one pick an option.
Number one?
Number one, 14 minutes from November 12th.
Okay. Okay, so consent will be the approval of the committee meeting minutes, the bill, and the department reports.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? Throw a call.
Trustee LaRue.
Aye.
Trustee Kreis.
Aye.
Trustee Killily.
Aye.
Trustee Mascol.
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni.
Aye.
Who wants to add to trustee business? Trustee Kreis?
I actually, everything is quiet on the grand front, and the only thing I have to report on is that the Veterans Committee will be meeting on Monday evening. And hopefully, we will have two members here, Brett and George. So we are planning on meeting on Monday evening, and that's all I have, other than I've been working on the enterprise zone. We will have that under your business there.
Okay. Trustee Shavoni?
Yeah, Mayor, the only thing that I have is under your business also is the approval of the revised home ordinance. So I'll leave that to you.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
Trustee Gillis, committee here this evening. Fire Department, Police, or Public Works, does have anything you would like to add? Have you guys left anything that was under your business? Trustee LaRue?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I don't believe we had a meeting since this. But I'd like to announce that I am a proud grandfather again. We got a granddaughter this time, and her name is Nova Rose. She was born on Thanksgiving night, November 27th. She was six pounds, 14 ounces, and 18 inches long. She's very cute. Okay. Moving on, I'd like to remind everyone again that we have our toy drive going on. We're hoping to have all the toys collected by this Saturday, 13th. We could extend that, I guess, if we had to, but I think things are going well. And we have a lot of wrapping to do. So we'll be wrapping Sunday, the 14th, up here at noon, if anyone is available and has tape and wrapping paper. And at this time, I believe Chief Kaufman would like to say something.
Yeah, I'd just like to. Frank, trustee LaRue. He's the Director of Community and Policing Committee. Frank, who's.
Frank Pearson.
Put forth the effort in the Toys Drive this year. It's the first time they're doing it. And Police Department wanted to help out the best we can. And we'd just like to make this donation, myself and others who went shopping today and did the best we can to help us out.
You guys block all the ways.
That's not right. So, thank you.
Thank you. So like I said, we've got a lot of wrapping to do. This is very, very generous. We did wrap a lot last Sunday, but it pays in comparison to what this is. We've got a lot this week also. Thank you. I believe it's a crowd. So we're doing quite well, but we could never have enough. We have 80-some kids who'd like to help out this year. So please keep giving.
Trustee Killily. And trustee Mascol.
Yes, Mayor, just one item. I believe at the November 26th meeting, I was not present, but trustee Kreis brought up the potential agreement with PSM, the payment processing company, which attorney Leeison has reviewed and worked with the vendor and made some modifications to. I would ask that we proceed with pursuing that because there's some savings involved to the village. I know we didn't have it on the agenda tonight, but perhaps we can move forward and we'll approve that officially the next morning.
That would be perfect.
Okay. And will have any objections to that?
Can I just ask one question? Are there other people at the PSM that you've got to approach each other?
I believe we did get several references, but I hear that they will.
Basically, you're a good company. Always nice to have a little input.
Absolutely. I'll go and check to be sure and answer. That was all I had here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Village engineer? Chuck, do you have anything?
Nothing, sir, Mayor.
Okay. Department heads? Chief Botweger?
Just a couple of things. One thing I wanted to bring up, trustee Gillis, one thing I wanted to bring up, is the Federal Department received a grant from the Office of State Emergency and Martial for personal safety equipment in the amount of $10,600. D.C. Rita wrote the grant. I worked with my. We're getting three complete sets of turnout gear and 27 pairs of gloves. So it's a zero match. So I just wanted to thank D.C. Rita for working on it hard. And the other thing is to just remind the residents to be careful with Christmas lights and that, follow the rules, make sure they're three sets, and electric extension cords. That's all.
Chief, who did you say wrote the grant? D.C.?
D.C. Rita. Marty Rita, Detective Chief.
Great news. Chief Kaufman?
I'd just like to remind the residents as well with the holidays, keep your house safe, keep your doors locked. This is the worst time, one of the worst times of the year for robberies, burglaries. Everybody likes to wrap their gifts, put them under a tree, make it look wonderful. It's just there for taking, so be cautious with that. Try to live with the items you put out, keep the stuff in. That's about it. Just keep an eye out.
Thank you, everybody. Superintendent Stary?
Nothing, sir, Mayor.
Okay. Under my business, first item under my business is the approval of the ordinance for the enterprise zone. You received it. And also attorney Leeison's recommendation. And David Chandler here is here. Do you have any questions for him? Did you have a comment on that?
No, I think though if Mr. Chandler would like to come up and he can answer the questions because he's the expert initially, Manolte, he kind of jumped in at the end of the process. But there are, just to give you some background, and I'm certainly not the expert, Mr. Chandler is, but there are four proposed enterprise zones. I'll just give a quick overview. Current enterprise zones in the state of Illinois are all going to sunset.
That's correct.
And enterprise zones are another, what I call, tool locks for economic development. They are going to be through this consortium of South Suburban mayors and managers who, I believe, engaged Center for Neighborhood and Technology to assist in the applications because they did not have the capacity to prepare these applications, which are pretty substantial. There are four proposed enterprise zones.
That's correct.
And we would be in the Cal-SAG with, how many communities are Cal-SAG?
15 other communities.
In Cal-SAG. If you could just talk about the other three and the number of communities.
Well, the other three are smaller in the number of communities. The Cal-Umet, I believe, has six communities involved. The Will Cook community, the Enterprise Zone, has six or seven. And the Lincoln Avenue 394 quarter is seven or eight.
And all of the other, there's 36 communities total.
Not sure of the exact number, but 34.
And all but two have approved the intergovernmental agreement and the ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay. And I know that the attorney had some concerns that he shared with the board. I made available all of the information that I had received on the enterprise zone, and I asked everybody to contact me if they had any questions or concerns. And I believe Mr. Leeison thought it would be good to invite Mr. Chandler here tonight to address any concerns. So I'm opening it up to the board. Again, some of the incentives would be on a project, and we have a couple here. Go ahead.
Maybe I could just mention, it seemed like some of the concerns were sort of on the potential of some liability. And I guess to sort of mention some positive side of why everybody's interested in doing this anyway. The enterprise zone is programmed in the state of Illinois. The idea of the state is to sort of concentrate tax incentives for businesses to locate in a certain geography. And so among the sort of major incentives that the state offers, concentrates in the enterprise zone, the sort of easiest one to handle is a waiver of sales tax on building materials and projects. So if a company, say, builds a factory and it's a million-dollar construction project, maybe $200,000 of that is building materials, and the sales tax on that would be 8, 8.5%. So the state waives that. So that's a couple of points off the total project cost. And that by itself is sometimes enough to make a difference between whether a business comes in or doesn't. Businesses also able to claim up to 1/2 of 1% of its revenue as a tax discount on its income tax, state income tax, very substantial. If the business that comes in is large, then there are, you know, a number of other significant incentives that can be applied to that business, including waiver on sales tax or machinery and other equipment that's used in a plant, or also a waiver or a discount on utility taxes. So these are substantial incentives, and they can make a difference. And as Karen was saying, the state has sort of changed its enterprise zone law, actually changed in 2012. And the reason they changed it is because what they found was that some enterprise zones were being very effective in terms of bringing business into their communities. Others were sort of not being very effective at all. It sort of depended on how seriously the communities took the effort to be active in the enterprise zone. And the towns that were active, the areas that were active, were very effective in terms of getting people. So they wanted, they changed the law, and so instead of just having economic need, now you have to have economic plans, economic opportunity and assets. And this area, this Cal-SAG area, has a ton of assets. You have a lot of rail activity period freight assets, you have expressway access, the recent intersection connecting 294 and I-57 is a very substantial boon here, potentially in terms of tracking business. And you have a lot of strong organizations. You have a land bank here in the South Suburbs that can help the Assembly of Rain. You have the GIS app that South Suburban Meters and Managers has a great tool to track business. So you have a lot of assets. You have a lot of potential, and the enterprise zone is another way to sort of capitalize. I think that attorney Leeison raised the possibility that there would be some potential liabilities involved in this. And I think he was thinking about other intergovernmental agreements that you've been involved in where there was a substantial investment. You know, it's always a serious concern. I guess I would point out there's maybe a couple of differences from what I understand of the other situation where there was an intergovernmental agreement. In that situation, you had, the village was involved in investing in infrastructure, some substantial dollars involved. Here, there's no investment. I mean, what you're doing as a member of the enterprise zone is you're assisting the state in administering incentives. So, you know, the potential for messing that up in some way is kind of limited. And we feel like there is a risk to that. It's a risk that could be handled by the, I mean, some of you should talk to your insurance agents. Should you be insured against a horizontal mission insurance by your board or by this governing council? I think it was mentioned that there's going to be a governing council that sort of decide on local incentives and the rules by which, to the extent that the state allows flexibly for administering incentives. And so I think the adequate town is, well, let's make this a simple responsibility. So they said, we'll just say that they have a governing council, everybody's going to have a vote on it, and they make decisions by majority. I don't think people, you know, really worried about the liability issues particularly. I think that the thought was that really, they really didn't address that. It seemed like something was on their minds. But I think that since what we're concerned about is making some professional decisions about the administration of incentives, that something could be addressed by horizontal missions and insurance, possibly taken by the board or by individuals in this county. So, you know, that's kind of the background of it. As Karen said, the two counties, well, in your case, just Will Cook County, for some of the enterprise zones of Will and Cook, and so both counties are involved, and all the other towns are involved. And the other thing is we have kind of, you guys don't pass, is we got a horrible sample because part of the ordinance is that the town's listed, and there's a map and a legal definition of the enterprise zone, of which area from the local team is included. So if you don't do this, you know, we're in a lot of trouble because this is the, you already considered, but he's signed on. And we've got to turn this thing in before December 31st. So we don't have to go back to the town. So anyway, that's the sort of background, and whatever questions you have that I could address on that.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I heard you mention that the Cal-SAG enterprise zone, that the local team would be part of, has 16 communities, but the other three zones only have six or seven. Why is there such a lopsided number in the zone?
Yeah. For one thing, the geographic scale of the towns is smaller in this part of the county than in the other places, especially in terms of the Will Cook area. Also, you have the, some of the assets that you have in this area kind of extend in an arc like that that sort of draws us together. So like 57, and also the Indiana Harbor Hill Railroad, which goes through kind of from the southwest. So you have some rail and highway assets that sort of link the communities together. And I think the other thing is that the, there was a, there has been an existing Cal-SAG enterprise zone in the past. It's been quite successful. And includes Alse and I'm not sure what other towns besides Alse, Blue Island. And it's been pretty effective. And so the number of communities that came in wanted to be part of that Cal-SAG enterprise zone. Now, I should say, that enterprise zone as such will cease to exist, but there's experience in terms of administering enterprise zones. It's been effective. So some of the communities wanted to be part of this enterprise zone because there was some background they know how it was going to be appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Anybody have any questions?
And the other comment, this is just the application. This is just, it has to get approved by the state, correct, David?
That's correct. And, you know, I think one of the reasons why people didn't go into such great detail in determining the governance and all that stuff is because, I mean, we hope we get the application approved. But, you know, we don't know. If it is approved, then we've got, you know, we've got to make these decisions.
And I believe the competition is going to be pretty fierce. The anticipated amount of applications that are going to be submitted, there's only the X number of enterprise zones, correct?
That's right. Right now, there's 96, 90-something, 94, 95, 96 enterprise zones existing in the state. This year, the state is only going to approve 45. So the number's going to decline. There's, you know, probably 100 applications that are going in for enterprise zones. So it's a very competitive. And I would say that the Cal-SAG is a great opportunity. The state has like 10 criteria for selecting enterprise zones, and the Cal-SAG hits all 10. They're strong enough. So I would, you know, if they go by the rules, we should have a great chance of getting selected. We got to put in the application.
Karen, I'm listening to exhibit C B and C that's in the ordinance.
I sent them to everybody.
We had them at the last meeting, so we didn't get copies this meeting.
Sorry?
We had everything at the last meeting.
I emailed everybody the exhibits. I emailed them. I thought I did. I know I emailed them to you, attorney Leeison, correct? You had everything?
I did.
So, and I believe the exhibits will be appropriate exhibits.
They will.
I can get them to you, like I'm trying to email them. Okay, C, yeah, B, yes, yeah. The legal distributions and the map, yeah. I haven't taken my hand card, so I should have.
Okay. I've been looking for a motion to approve the ordinance for the enterprise zone.
Make the motion.
I'll second. Throw a call.
Trustee Shavoni.
Aye.
Trustee Kreis.
Aye.
Trustee Killily.
Aye.
Trustee LaRue.
Aye.
Trustee Mascol.
Aye.
I've been looking for the approval of the intergovernmental agreement for the enterprise zone. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, throw a call.
Trustee Kreis.
Aye.
Trustee LaRue.
Aye.
Trustee Killily.
Aye.
Trustee Mascol.
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni.
Aye.
I'm looking for approval of the change in the plumbing code ordinance.
All this is, is just a work plate for those that don't know that we already have it in place, but we decided instead of doing this every time Illinois changed their code and we had to bring vampires to weather, just replace the words for the year to current. And of course, it upgraded the insulation requirement. That's all it does.
You want to make the motion?
Got a motion? The second?
The second.
So attorney Leeison, it mentioned a couple of specific points in the ordinance. Would that consider to be, anytime it says in the ordinance, you would rewrite it?
That's the only time it does say it in the ordinance. It used to say the 2004 plumbing codes. We just did the most current plumbing code as amended.
Okay.
So that if the state changes it in the future, you guys, your ordinance will just move with the state?
Excellent.
And first and second, throw a call.
Trustee Shavoni.
Aye.
Trustee Killily.
Aye.
Trustee Kreis.
Aye.
Trustee LaRue.
Aye.
Trustee Mascol.
Aye.
I forgot. I need approval of the board meeting minutes from November 12th, 2014.
Actually, I have a couple of corrections. Can I make an eye over the other stuff on page one, or a couple of comments under Jackie Hill about the parking? It's, it says state road, it's actually a county road.
Yeah, county road.
I was starting to think it was a state road.
No.
Then Klezky is county. And then, under the President's business, under the approval of this furniture for the pop over there, it's on cottage road. It indicates no discussion, and there actually was discussion, and I would like the record to reflect that I could ask attorney Leeison if the village would incur any liability by paving that road. And I believe there was some other discussion as well.
Does anybody have a discussion? Wasn't there, Don?
Yes, there was. Thank you.
And, I mean, a lot of people look through the website to read these minutes, and that's all the options they have to see what we do up here. So I would like to see some sort of addition to how to go back and.
Well, you know what? I can actually, since we're going to have a special meeting at the end of the month, I will revise to add the discussion part of it under there.
I don't remember all the crazy stuff that Don said. So we'd like to table this?
Yeah. If I could get a motion to table it, we'll go around it next.
I'd like a motion table.
The second.
Throw a call.
Trustee Kreis.
Aye.
Trustee Killily.
Aye.
Trustee LaRue.
Aye.
Trustee Mas. Trustee Mascol.
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni.
Aye.
Okay, um, at this time, I'd like to make the appointment of Sandra Cortez to the community policing committee. And I'd also like to make the appointment of Jean Barteky to the community policing committee, if you're here, we'd like to welcome you. And your favorite YouTube artist actually had to leave, but I would like to appoint Dan Ryback to EMA. He will get up to the clerk's office to get sworn in properly and everything like that. Um, is there anything else before the board? At this time, I'd be looking, oh, just so everybody's aware, our next meeting would normally be on Christmas Eve. The board has decided that we will be meeting on Monday, December twenty-second, at seven P M. Um, it will be up on the website, we posted, our agenda will be posted that Friday before, but, um, it'll be a special committee, well, special meeting, not a committee, a special meeting, it's just special meeting, right?
Happy to make the ordinance on that agenda?
That's what you want, that's what you told me, yep. And, uh, with no further business before the board, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?